All right, first up on our agenda is our invocation and Mr. McCrave, you were sitting closest to the podium if you would do us the honor and we'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. Once was lost, but now I'm found. Was blind, but now I see. God, we thank thee and we bless thee for your grace and your mercy. We thank you so much, God, for this opportunity to come before you, God, in this great city. Our mayor, city council, city managers, we thank you right now, God, for all you've done for us and all you're going to do. We pray right now, God, you would lead this city and guide us into all truth. We thank you so much, O God, for your mercy and your grace. Bless our community. Bless our leaders, our elected officials. Watch over this city and our county. We give you honor and glory in Jesus's name. Can we say amen?
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance identified by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, chapter four, title thirty, Kato Wallace of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, an agenda has been posted on the front door of City Hall and notification of this meeting has been given to the news media. I can confirm we have a quorum, correct?
Yes.
All right. What do we have up first?
First on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
All right, if you've reviewed the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion regarding the consent agenda? All in favor of acceptance of the consent agenda? That motion carries unanimously with six votes.
Under public hearings, item number one is to consider ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-one-six amending the city of Greenwood zoning map by rezoning fifty-three point five two acres at thirteen eighty bypass twenty-five southeast from general commercial to R-ten high-density residential. You will recall that the developer previously asked to have this item delayed to August the fifteenth. We are here now to August the fifteenth. The developer did reach out last week and request additional time to be able to, I believe, get the right builder in place for this property. He is here this evening and if council has questions of him, we have advertised for a public hearing. So similar to last time, council has a couple of options. You can go ahead and open and close the public hearing and take second reading. You can have the public hearing and delay second reading or you can delay the public hearing and the second reading.
When we table or delay, is it specifically moving it to next month?
So the guidance is that the motion should, the motion should include a time in the future. You don't have to. You know, someone can make a motion and say, I would like to, you know, table this until the September nineteenth meeting. That automatically then pulls it off the table for the September nineteenth meeting. You could also make a motion to table it until additional information is provided, if that's what you're waiting for, at which point, once that information has been obtained, staff will then put it back on the agenda. So.
I mean, if we're, if we're looking for setting an actual date, that would be the, that would be my proposal. I just hate, we keep advertising and people keep taking time out of their day to come here.
And I don't know if anybody is here for the public hearing on this item. At the last meeting, you did open and close the public hearing, I believe, and no one was here.
No one is here.
So I don't know if anybody's actually here for this item. So again, you can have the public hearing now and delay the vote until a later meeting or you can, you can do it all tonight or you can delay it all until another meeting. But I agree with you, advertising the public hearing and then not having the vote is a little bit misleading.
If we, if we table pending additional information, do we have to put a specific date?
You don't have to. It would be then up to staff to bring it back.
I think that would be the better way because then when we do bring it back, then we can actually advertise a time and actually do something.
We can.
We've already tabled it. I think we ought to go ahead and have a public hearing, vote on it, let it go.
And you can do that as well.
I mean, we can't keep putting it off.
I mean, I understand.
And he's undecided what he wants to do.
And he's here if you, he's here if council wants to ask any questions of the developer.
Yeah, is there someone from diverse group here?
Ma'am?
Can you let us know why he's?
Mr. Dwyer.
It's Mr. Dwyer, yeah.
Yes, sir.
They just want to know why you need it tabled again.
Okay. What happened was we had a builder lined up for the property. We had gotten verbal commitments to it and then that builder went through a reorganization and they shrunk their service area to not include the Greenwood area. So we are actively pursuing three other builders and we just haven't gotten any information back from those three builders on whether they're going to move forward or not. So we don't want to tie up Mr. Utes's property with the rezoning if, in fact, we don't have a builder.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dwyer? Thank you. Do we, do we have anybody here that was wishing to speak regarding the proposed development at thirteen eighty bypass twenty-five southeast? Okay, I mean, I don't want to, okay, Craig.
So I mean, I think at this point, if you want to open and close the public hearing, that's fine. You can always have another one if you want.
Well, I mean, I think it would make the most sense when he, to do it when he has more information.
Sure, but what I'm saying is since Mr. Stuckey is here, you can open the public hearing, take his comment, and we can have one again later.
Okay.
If we want to have a second, a public discussion after he comes back?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
No, no, we will, we will have another, I mean, the proposal is to have another one.
Okay, well, I'll wait till.
All right.
Okay.
If the motion fails, then we will call you back up, Mr. Stuckey.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'm making the motion to table ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-one-six until additional information is obtained.
Second.
And then?
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hodo, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding the motion? All right, all in favor of tabling ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-one-six until we receive further information? All opposed? All right, that motion carries by vote five to one. Thank you, Mr. Stuckey, for your patience. We'll get you back next time.
We have one public appearance this evening. I'd like to recognize Ms. Kay Self from Vision Greenwood. She is going to provide council with a presentation of an annual report. And I promised you a clicker and I'm going to go get it right now because I forgot it. Come on up though.
You're welcome to come up.
And in the meantime, obviously, we're not taking any action on this, but I want to, in just full disclosure, we're listening to a presentation. I am on the board of Vision Greenwood.
It should be on tape.
We have a lot back to everybody.
Let me plug it in first.
Good evening, Ms. Self.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Are we sure this is on?
Yeah, it's, I think it's mostly for the, the live stream audio.
Sure.
Not necessarily for the audience.
Should be good.
So, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. As Julie mentioned, I'm Kay Self, Executive Director of Vision Greenwood, and I'm happy to be here to share some information about our organization. I'd like to start with a little bit of the history for those of you who are not familiar with who we are and what our strategic initiatives are. So in two thousand, the Foundation for a Greater Greenwood County, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, was established to support the charitable operations of the Greenwood Partnership Alliance. The focus was community development and workforce development. In two thousand, in two thousand twenty, we became a standalone organization and we branded under the name Vision Greenwood. To date, we have invested over two point nine million dollars into the community to support initiatives and growth and success of our community. Our, our vision is to make Greenwood the best community to live, work, and raise a family, and our mission is providing leadership to enhance the quality of life in Greenwood through strategic, strategic long-term vision and collaborative community development initiatives. Our purpose is continuous improvement in Greenwood through focused, innovative community enhancement and collaboration. Vision Greenwood will accomplish this by identifying opportunities, implementing strategic initiatives, and leveraging community partnerships. Quality of place is very important to everyone in this room. I often ask people, you know, what is it about your community that means most to you? What made you choose Greenwood? What made you choose another community? And it always comes down to family. Is, can I provide a good job? Do we have restaurants and good shopping opportunities? Do we have recreational activities to do with our families? And what we find is that communities that are innovative and stay ahead of the curve are the ones that are most successful, and we want to see Greenwood be that community of choice. So now I'm going to roll into some of our initiatives. So technology and innovation, this is one of our new core initiatives at Vision Greenwood. Many of you are familiar with the broadband task force that we form to really and truly provide solutions to the underserved areas of our community. I know the pandemic certainly opened everyone's eyes with telehealth medicine, remote work, learning, and e-commerce, and so those were some identified areas that we needed to work on. So with, with the broadband task force, on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, we launched the Closing the Gap Speed Test initiative on our website, visiongreenwood.org, and the speed test tool allowed us to determine actual internet speeds and identify the areas that are in most need of broadband. The goal was to collect the data in all areas to write grants and secure funding for broadband This is a photo of some of our broadband task force members. Senator Billy Garrett is our chairman of the task force. Representative McCravy, Susan Jackson, you see in the middle, Nanette Edwards with the South Carolina Office of Regulatory Staff. You see Tom Allen, Director of Transportation and Safety, and then on the right is Jim Strichinger over the broadband office. I can't say enough about the tremendous work and support that they have, have given Another area that we partnered with the Department of Commerce on the Office of Regulatory Staff and Broadband is we signed an memorandum of understanding with those two offices and it was really to establish a pilot program that combines mapping technology, technologies and best practices to support the future grant writing opportunities. Just knowing that the four hundred million dollars is coming down the pipeline and then there's money from the federal government, we wanted to make sure that Greenwood was in a good position to be able to capitalize on those dollars. And so we've been reaching out to internet service providers, you know, sharing our data that we've collected and we, we hope to see some success with, with those grant applications. We've actually been into outreach in the Hodges area. We've been to the Mount Mariah area and recently we held two outreach broadband meetings in the promised land. So I feel like we're making a lot of progress to those underserved areas. So from the speed test that we conducted, these are the two target areas that you see that, that we are, have enough data to be able to write the grants. The black dots there on the map show no service locations or homes. The second target area is up in the north area where the Eagles Harbor area is, and those are just the two areas right now that we have the speed test. We're still encouraging people to take the speed test because we need the test to be able to show the need. This is from the actual broadband office. If you notice the orange and red areas, those are the most underserved households. Fortify is a pilot program. We not only look at, you know, solutions, as we all know, fiber to the home can take years. We're looking for any solution, whether it's short term, to, to provide opportunities for people that need connectivity. So Fortify is a dual SIM card router that picks up on a Verizon or, you know, whichever connectivity is the best one, AT&amp;T or Verizon, and what it does, it's And what it does, it's, you know, it just allows people the opportunity to connect. And so we've had this pilot program out, and we've gotten good results from it. And so, just to give you a little story about this. So if you're familiar with Race Track gas stations, so in Louisiana, they use this as a backup to their internet services. And so when Hurricane came through, they had this. They... everyone else was offline, but Race Track was still up and running. So a lot of people use this for commercial backup, but they're moving into the residential market just because of the need. Many of you may remember back in March, John McGallegott, CEO of York Exponential, we brought him to our community to talk to industry leaders, community leaders, and our students about technology and how fast it's emerging. And so with that, all the students here, I'll just kind of tell you why they're raising their hands. So Mr. McGallegott put up a slide that said, you know, how many of these apps, it was Facebook, it was Twitter, on the slide. And he asked, well, how many of you have these apps? And they all raised their hand. And then he said, how many of you pay for these apps? They all put their hands down. He said, if you don't pay for the product, you are the product. And it was an eye-opening moment for those students to realize that, you know, technology is everywhere. And I think that his message is that, you know, for us to be moving forward, we need to be up to speed with our technology, whether it's our students, whether it's in our industries, because it's happening fast. And the reason for bringing him was to make sure that Greenwood could be in front of the curve as it relates to technology. Since his visit in March, he's actually been touring the different industries that you see on this screen, looking at different opportunities for them, whether it's artificial intelligence, robotics, and just listening to some of their pain points to see if he can provide solutions. And his idea is not really to replace people with robots. It's to teach people how to work alongside of robotics, which is the future. But also, we all recognize there are just some jobs that people don't want to do. And you can have someone, you know, freed up from a position or a job that they don't want to do, and let them work on the things that they're really needed for. So this is an exciting thing to really share with everyone. Vision Greenwood is working on digital economic development. We partnered with the South Carolina Office of Rural Health and also the South Carolina Rural Innovation Network on a USDA grant for Greenwood to have its own customized digital economy ecosystem roadmap. And we're excited to say that 155,000, a little bit over, was awarded for Greenwood and Newberry to become two of the newest communities to take advantage of that roadmap. And the whole purpose of this roadmap is to kickstart our digital economy. The Greenwood Genetic Center, life sciences, and the biotechnology industry has been a longstanding initiative at Vision Greenwood's. We have worked closely with them, you know, to mine those opportunities at the partnership campus for that development. We see a lot of opportunity on the south end of town for growth. And, you know, we work with the South Carolina Biotechnology Industry Organization to bring some of those opportunities. I mean, the Genetic Center, I think everyone can agree, is probably one of our most unique assets and bravest strengths in our community. And just knowing that the life science industry is one of the fastest-growing knowledge economy industries, but it's also $25.7 billion in economic impact to our state. Those are great opportunities to mine for Greenwood. This map shows over 700 life science firms in South Carolina. If you look at Greenwood, we light up the map with 30 or more companies. We have a real opportunity here in the life science and biotechnology industry. So we support the Genetic Center through the development of the partnership campus in many other ways, but we do leverage our resources to support those initiatives. And recently, we've just been a part of a committee, partnership campus committee for that development. And that is parcel that is in the city. Community development, another one of the major cornerstones of what Vision Greenwood does. The city, I can't say enough about the good work that you all have done. It's tremendous transformation from, you know, seeing what the city looked like many years ago. And Vision Greenwood, our organization, has been a part of the City Center Original Master Plan, the update to the City Center Master Plan, the Kits and Mills Study, Carolina Avenue Connector, and the Edgerville Street Corridor. Those are just to name a few. And so when you talk about renewing plans and dusting those off, we've had a really good relationship working with the city on taking a good look at that and how we can bring those opportunities to the community. The Buxton Retail Study, 2019, Vision Greenwood, the organization-supported funding for this study, along with Uptown Greenwood and CPW helped support financially. And so we still today continue to match those 20, you know, retailers and commercial votes to the community. Green space and expansion clearly is a way to give reason for people to put feet on the street, as I call it, in your community. And so we're looking at opportunities to increase that green space so the In-Have Trail connectivity of town. So the City Center Master Plan update, I know all of you are very familiar with this, but Vision Greenwood, I think, was part of a traffic calming piece to this. And I think it's fantastic to see more of this green space in our community. This is a new initiative that we started back in, I believe it was May of 2021 in collaboration with Uptown Greenwood and also the Small Business Development Center. And so what this is, is that it's fostering entrepreneurism in Greenwood through entrepreneurial ecosystem building. The Brew Program, it was successfully launched. It was on May 26, and it serves as a community platform for new business growth ideas with community feedback. We are now part of a regional brew. We share and exchange ideas in the upstate with other brew communities to bring those opportunities back. Our next brew is August 31. It's Two Girls and an Oven. That'll be in Uptown. We'll also be... it's free and open to the public, so invite everyone to attend. We'll also have the Start Grow Navigator introduction. Thank you. Vision Greenwood has a millennial recruitment plan that we want to focus the group and complete and continue work on this plan. One of the things that we've realized as it relates to millennials is that... is that they want to have spaces where they can socialize and exchange ideas. Vision Greenwood has been working with a company called Flywheel to develop design ideas and concepts for a center in Greenwood. Some of those concepts would include a community kitchen and a retail lab space. Those are two exciting opportunities. A retail lab space would enable entrepreneurs who have something that they'd like to sell but really don't have the opportunity to go out and set up brick and mortar yet. It gives them a six-month window period to see how it might go for them. But it's certainly all about driving economic development for our community. Education, Vision Greenwood supports education by identifying and financially supporting programming needs that address gaps and provide community impact. So we've supported three educational initiatives to date. The G. Frank Russell Technology Center by enhancing their building construction program through a tiny house project. We currently have a shortage of skilled trades in our community. The Tiny House Build will renew the interest in the program by encouraging students to fill up classes and earn a certificate. Graduates will be matched with apprenticeships. And then the tiny house will be auctioned off for support... to support sustainability of the program. Vision Greenwood funded $25,000 to start this initiative. A Pathway to Advancement is our second educational initiative. And what this is, it's a program that provides gap funding for land or stop-out students. And those are students that have achieved 90 or more credit hours toward their degree but had to step away for usually financial reasons. And so this gap funding gave them an opportunity to come back and finish their degree and enter the workforce. And so some of those students were STEM majors, nurses, and future educators. And we just believe that helping students earn their degree to enter a local workforce makes a contribution to our community. So SE Codes is a program in collaboration with the South Carolina Department of Commerce's Office of Innovation and Bill Carolina SC to provide free access to technology education. Vision Greenwood serves as the site location and for providing the free coding classes and mentoring for those interested in exploring a career in programming. We hosted a JavaScript concept class where students earn their certificates. And then our next course we will be hosting will be Fund and Basics. And I do want to mention one that's not on here that's really new. It's just in a conversational stage right now. But one of the areas of education where we feel like we can move the needle is potentially through a program that offers education as a service. It's a 24/7 on-demand tutoring platform that, you know, all students would be able to have access, to be able to do their homework, and it would be using local hires. So we're going to continue looking at that opportunity for our students. The Medical Innovation District, this has been a long initiative that Vision Greenwood has been focused on. The plan continues supporting the connectivity of Lander University to Uptown, to the Carolina Avenue Connector, to the hospital, Self Regional, and to the Genetic Center campus. The Carolina Avenue Connector, which is now, I believe, number 22 on the Capitol Project sales tax, that will certainly be a game changer. But it also will lead to that potential development that we see so much promise in on the south end of town. You know, we've partnered and had multiple conversations with the city on neighborhood enhancements in the corridor, partnering with Habitat. We see that, you know, there are opportunities, but there's still a lot of work to be done. I know Vision Greenwood, years ago, funded several homes to be revitalized. But, you know, it's now to take another look at that plan and try to see what else we can do because that is the gateway to our Medical Innovation District. And I think, you know, it's an opportunity to be able to work on something that's meaningful and in that West Side neighborhood. And the social determinants of health, you know, we recognize that social determinants of health are impacting our community. We work collaboratively to support the initiatives and unique needs of our community to bring an increased focus on health challenges we face in Greenwood. One of those collaborative efforts is with Habitat for Humanity. And so they have an aggressive goal of building 50 homes in five years. And we want to see that happen, and we want to see the Edgerville Street Corridor take shape in any way that we can be a supporting partner. I did skip the trail connections, but I did allude to it earlier. I think the trail connectivity is going to be a big piece of that quality of life that people are looking for. If we can keep those connectivity through, you know, the Uptown, through potentially Connie Maxwell, they're... it's not impossible. And I think if we can really put our heads together, we can make this happen. And lastly, companies are looking for the number-one return on investment with the least risk. And so one of Vision Greenwood's initiatives that we've been working on for many years is, you know, having properties under option agreement that companies, they know what the price is, they know the due diligence on it. Ed Horn in our office is our, you know, special projects manager, and he's a commercial license broker. He's fostered these relationships with the property owners, and he continues to manage this over 1,400 acres and work with over 10 different property owners to keep this healthy pipeline of properties because it's not only good for Greenwood, it's good of the state of South Carolina to have a nice pipeline of properties for companies to look at.
So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I certainly want to say thank you to City Council for your continued support in all that you do for the community.
Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Self?
I know it was a lot.
I have some, but I'll give you a call or I'll send you an email.
Yes, ma'am.
Of my questions.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right. Under new business item number one is to administer the oath of office to Mr. James Jones, who is our new City Council Representative from Ward 2. So I'm going to ask Mr. Jones to come forward, and any members of his family that he'd like to join him. And Judge Miller is going to administer the oath.
Good evening, Judge Miller and Mr. Jones. It's a pleasure to be able to be a witness to this.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duty of this office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve and protect.
And to preserve and protect.
And defend the Constitution of the state.
And to defend the Constitution of the state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As a councilman of the City of Greenwood.
As a councilman of the City of Greenwood.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly and impartially.
Fairly and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust imposed in me.
Exercise the trust imposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavor.
And I will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I've been elected.
The purposes for which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank y'all. Yes. All my family.
Get as many as you want. This is your time.
This is your last Sunday.
It's a large family. No, I'm discussing.
One, two, and three.
That's right. First time we got a man. Hey, look, we gotta shave him before they miss shaving.
Break that party up over there.
That's right. We gonna break him. Trust me, he'll go our way more. He'll be going over there with you guys.
Oh, get out of here.
You can't listen to him now. He's Judge Miller.
I'm doing it below. We go way back. Way back.
Councilman Jones? Councilman Jones?
I'm sorry, you need to wet up your space. Thank you.
What you got? You got cards?
I thought they were junk.
No, it is.
You got big shoes to fill, see? You know, there's not been a mayor in this millennium. Uh-oh. I like it.
Ever since I've been on council.
Ever since I've been on.
Breaking the rules.